Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Borough Council of Gettysburg for September 9th, 2024. We will start, as we always do, with a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Announcements. An executive session of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the August 26, 2024 monthly work session of the Borough Council, consistent with Section 708A1, Section 08A4, and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act, for the following purposes: One, to provide information and to discuss matters of employment, terms and conditions of employment, and the evaluation of performance of Borough employees; and two, to review and discuss matters of Borough business, which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. I'd also like to announce a slate of upcoming important meetings of the council. These are in addition to our usual monthly business meetings and workshops with some special date adjustments as well. All of these meetings will occur at 7:00 PM. In October, the business meeting will take place on Tuesday, the 15th. On Monday, the 21st, we'll have the first of several budget work sessions. On Monday, October 28th, we'll have another budget work session. On Monday, November 4th, we'll have another budget work session. On Tuesday, November 5th, the next night, if needed, we'll have another budget work session. Tuesday, November 12th, will be the usual monthly business meeting. Wednesday, the 20th, the draft of the 2025 budget will be posted for public review. And on Monday, December 9th, we will have our usual monthly business meeting, where we will hopefully be adopting a budget for the following year. It takes us to the approval of agendas and minutes. Would anybody care to make a motion to approve the September 9th, 2024 agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Mr. President, there was a late motion. Is there, Mr. Eastman, is there something the council needs to do to account for that?
Yeah, just, there is an additional motion on the agenda regarding the 2014 Community Development Block grant funds. I was informed of the omission by Mr. Whitmore later today pursuant to Section 712.1 of the Sunshine Act. You may amend the motion and/or amend the agenda to add this motion, because, number one, it was a matter that was brought to the attention of the Borough within the 24-hour period prior to the meeting. Secondly, the matter is de minimis in that it does not involve the expenditure of Borough funds, and it does not involve the authorization of the Borough entering into a contract or agreement. So as long as council takes a majority vote to allow the addition of the motion, we're in good stead to proceed with that item on the agenda as indicated.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the September 9th, 2024 agenda as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting held August 12th, 2024, and to approve the minutes of the CDBG public hearing, number two, and the council work session each held on August 26, 2024, as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting held on August 12, 2024, and to approve the minutes of the CDEG public hearing, number two, and the council work session each held on August 26, 2024, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any omissions or corrections to the minutes? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. It takes us to our first public comment section for the evening. This first section is reserved to items that appear on tonight's agenda as amended. We ask that the public use the podium. Please speak into the microphone. Please limit yourself to five minutes, and we need you to state your name and address of residence. Is there any public comment? All right. Seeing none, we will move on. We will go to the planning department and Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening. A copy of my report was included with the electronic files. Overall, the Planning Commission has been holding a number of meetings, and we also had an additional rezoning meeting associated with the rezoning effort. The next Planning Commission meeting, scheduled for next Monday, September 16th, will be at the Rec Park. We will have the consultant available at that meeting. We're going to be discussing a few key items related to the R2 district, the NC1, Neighborhood Commercial 1 district, and areas of concern for the downtown area, including the revitalization zone. Other than that, there are a number of items that the Planning Commission is working through. We should still be on a timeline to have an approval, or at least a review, of the ordinance at the October meeting. We'll make sure that that meeting is at a location that we're advertising it prior to allow for the budget workshops as necessary. With regards to the, I guess, motions for this evening, there are two items. The first involves the land development agreement with SpectraCo regarding their addition to the industrial site there. And then the second one involves the sign ordinance itself. Included in the materials was the staff report for the sign ordinance. I was not going to go over that verbatim, as we've dissected this quite a bit over the past year, but in terms of the highlights, I'm more than willing to go over that at the proper time. But otherwise, that concludes the report.
Could you state again, please, the date, time, and location of the planning meeting with our consultant, Michael Baker?
September 16th, 7:00 PM, and that's going to be at the auditorium room over at the recreation park.
Thank you, sir. All right. Would anybody care to make any motions under Mr. Whitmore's tab?
I'll make a motion to authorize the execution and delivery of a land development agreement with SpectraCo Corporation for the development of certain real property located within the Borough and situated at 301 East Water Street. J. Matthew Moon, President Borough Council, and Sarah L. Stahl, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to sign, attest, execute, and deliver the land development agreement on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next motion.
I'll make a motion to enact ordinance number 1491-24, the Gettysburg Borough Sign Ordinance of 2024, for the purposes of the amendment, modification, and replacement of the current Borough Sign Ordinance regulations, as codified in Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, I'll just say, this has been a long time coming. We've been working on this for almost eight years, trying to bring the Borough ordinance into compliance with Supreme Court decisions. And I want to thank Mr. Whitmore for hitting the ground running with organizing community members to make sure we were getting proper input, and I just want to thank you for your work on that as well. All right. If there's no other further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to Mrs. English.
Thank you. I do have two motions on the agenda. They are--
Can we slide the microphone over to her, please?
There are two motions on the agenda for HARB. The Borough-- Oh, the Borough is recommending that the project, the second motion, is remanded back to HARB to be reviewed on their September 18th meeting. Relevant information was reported by the building code official, which is contrary to the applicant's scope. We received an email from PMCA today that nothing has been done to rectify the situation since September 9th. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Would anybody care to make the first HARB motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, HARB, following its review during a meeting held on August 21, 2024, and to approve the grant of certificates of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA-240055, major project, 29 North Washington Street, J. DiPoma, Gettysburg LLC, for the following business signs: a front monument sign with existing illumination, two front business signs with four light fixtures totaling 4,800 lumens, and a rear business sign with two light fixtures with a combined total of 6,500 lumen, and all illumination must be downlit, as submitted in the application dated June 17, 2024. And COA-220057, major project, 226 North Stratton Street, Wesley K. Heiser, for the complete replacement of 22 windows on the exterior facades of entire house as detailed in the application and supporting documents dated July 31, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on either of these? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anybody care to make the second motion, and then we can talk a little bit about why this odd thing is happening?
I'll make a motion based upon subsequently discovered relevant and material information, as reported to the Borough of Gettysburg by the building code official, which information was contrary to the applicant's presentation to the Borough of Gettysburg's Historic Architectural Review Board, HARB, during a meeting held on August 21st, 2024. The application dated July 30th, 2024. COA-240058, major project, 255 South Washington Street of Bregenzur Holdings, LLC, which was originally filed as a result of a notice of violation issued on behalf of the Borough, is hereby respectfully remanded to HARB for its further review and consideration in light of the subsequently discovered information and any other relevant and material information presented to HARB for its subsequent recommendation to the Borough Council. Consequently, the Borough Council will await further recommendation from HARB relative to the council's consideration of whether to grant a certificate of appropriateness for the project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. So I just want to summarize this incident, just so everybody understands what it is we're voting here tonight. This is not something we have seen frequently, so it reads a little oddly. My understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. English, was that the applicant made representations to HARB about the scope of the project that he was engaged in, and after HARB had issued their approval, it was later discovered by our code officials that the representations made at the HARB meeting were not complete, and that the work was already underway, and the work that was being done may or may not have ever qualified for HARB under their guidelines. So we are sending this back to HARB unapproved, so that they can legally reconsider the application. That's what a vote in favor of this motion would do.
Is to send it back.
To send it back to HARB for them to be able to execute their enforcement of their mandate. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. And then we have a motion with the Museum Commission.
I'll make the motion to authorize the Borough of Gettysburg to enter into a master grant contract with the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for the Certified Local Government CLG Grant Program, in order to apply for and receive CLG grants for eligible Borough projects during the five-year term of the contract from 2024 until 2029. Charles R. Gable, Borough Manager, and Sarah L. Stahl, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to sign, attest, execute, and deliver the master grant contract on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. English? I also realized I forgot to ask if anybody had any questions before Mr. Whitmore, before we moved on. Thank you both. That takes us to the Parking Department. Back up.
Good evening. You all have my report. I have the comparisons there for the tickets and the permits, as usual, along with the pay-by-phone totals. For, RPPs are due. They expired August 31st, so they are due now. There is 170 that have been purchased to date. Last year, we were at about 270 at the end of the year, so there are a lot still more that need to come in, and we started enforcement on that today. There were 36 LPPs purchased, 16 reserved spaces. We did have a full-time officer out for two weeks on vacation. And then, I know Charles spoke a little bit about it last month, but as you can see, for the Racehorse Alley, revenue is up again because of the $18 versus $12. And other than the motion, I don't have anything else.
All right. Would anybody care to make the motion for the ordinance removing the meters on North Washington Street?
I'll move. A motion to enact ordinance number 1492-24, amending Chapter 15, Part 4 of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg, for the purposes of removing an area of pavement -- payment parking spaces on the west side of North Washington Street, between Racehorse Alley and Railroad Street, and to amend the payment parking zone on the west side of North Washington Street accordingly.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? As you are all well aware, this is one of the first steps in our, the next phase of our Gettysburg Interloop project that is currently underway on North Washington Street. And I just want to take a moment and thank the engineer, and the Parking Department, and Public Works, and everybody who is involved in the Planning Department in moving this project ahead as quickly as humanly possible. Thank you all for your hard work. Chad, to the people in your office who helped get this over the finish line and get them started, thank you for them as well. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. That takes us to Mr. Harbaugh in the Public Works Department.
Good evening. You all should have received my report. Couple highlights on my report. We are still continuing some maintenance in Stevens Run for Gettysburg Stormwater Authority. We are also, with the Agility Program, looking to do another alley to finish out the remainder of the money budgeted this year, and that's going to be on Legion Alley, between Baltimore Street and South Washington Street. And the three spaces out here, the Public Work Crew did them last week, and we are completing with them.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that you guys did an excellent job on that. You did it quickly, and it looks great out there, and thank you for helping expand the public's ability to access this building. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Harbaugh?
Just a comment, and to thank you for helping me understand better, but I wanted to bring it up today for the public to also understand. There's at least one restaurant that contacted me on Chambersburg Street about access to Racehorse Alley for their deliveries, for beer, food deliveries, and trash service. Apparently, they were concerned about the work that's going to be done on Railroad, and the word about town is that Racehorse Alley was going to be obstructed. So you are confirming, and we are confirming, that there is always going to be, during this construction that's happening on Railroad, there's always going to be access to Racehorse Alley for the restaurant businesses on Chambersburg Street.
Correct.
Thank you. Sometimes things get out there, and it's a little confusing to folks, and we want to clear that up.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's helpful. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Harbaugh? All right. Thank you, sir. That takes us to the engineer, Chad.
Good evening, Council. You have a copy of my written report. The only item that I'd like to highlight is that Gettysburg Interloop Phase B2 project. As you know, we did start last Tuesday. Labor Day was Monday. By the third day, we ran into three old abandoned pipes. So we were three for three in the first three days. It's kind of par for the course for those of us who have worked in Gettysburg in the streets, we find old pipes. Contractor was a little bit surprised, but luckily, we found that those pipes have been abandoned. We don't believe there's anything that's tied into them of significance. There was some time into addressing that exact question, to make sure that we weren't going to be abandoning a pipe that somebody's sump pump or something the guy's tied into. But while we were addressing that concern, something came to my attention that there's a, this is right by the Stevens Run, there's a row of about six properties, and most of them are occupied by college students, even though they're privately owned now. I believe, once upon a time, it was college-owned apartments, but now they're all privately owned, mostly college students. Those buildings, they all have those, we call them the little troughs that are in the sidewalks. There's little gutters that carry the water from the roof leaders out to the street. That wasn't part of our project, so that sidewalk is not to be replaced, but while we were studying, trying to figure out exactly where all the roof leaders go in those, I thought to myself, I would be remiss if I didn't bring it to your attention, that we do have those properties where this condition exists. I have talked to the Chair of the Stormwater Authority about this, Mike Malawicki, and he suggested that I start by getting a cost estimate to have those replaced, have those pieces of sidewalk replaced, and the storm pipe put in their place. The storm pipe would be a little trunk line, just like we've been doing, like on South Street, where we have a little trunk line under the sidewalk, tie the roof leaders into it. So I wanted to bring this to your attention tonight. Like I said, I would be remiss if I didn't, at least, because I've been hearing in our council meetings that we're concerned about the ADA compliance of these sidewalks. This is a perfect opportunity to replace this piece of sidewalk. There is about six locations in that sidewalk where we're going to be cutting into the sidewalk to tie in the water lines as we go. And also, the street's going to get repaved, so all the cut back into the street to replace the curb, kind of now is the best time. It probably won't happen for a long time if we don't do it now, it's that type of thing. It's going to add a significant amount of money to the project if we decide that we want to do it, though, so I don't know that number. So before I go any further, I'm kind of getting ahead of myself here. Before I go any further with this, I'm going to ask the contractor for a cost estimate on that, and then hopefully by your workshop meeting in two weeks from now, I can give you guys another update on that, to see if that's something that we want to consider adding to the project. Aside from that, there is going to be weekly construction meetings. We have a meeting this Thursday, where we're going to be, a couple of stakeholders, including the Gettysburg College, will be at those meetings. We'll be updating property owners that are being affected by any of the street closures on a week-by-week basis as we progress with the project. But so far, so good. We're getting, just hitting the ground running here into the second week of construction. This is a three-month process, so I'll be continuing to update you guys as they come. But that is all I have to add, unless you guys have any questions.
So those are called roof leaders?
Yeah, we call them roof leaders, or roof drains.
We've been calling them trough guys.
Yeah.
Everybody make a note. Any questions for Mr. Claybaugh on the work so far, or anything in his report? All right. Thank you, sir. That takes us to Chief Clenney. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. You all have my report, and I pointed out that three of the--
Can you pull the mic closer, please?
I'll turn it on, too.
Be good.
Three of the, three of us from the police department, well, two of us and then our co-responder, attended the overdose awareness walk. It was the night of the last meeting. I spoke briefly, I was honored, asked to speak. And Officer McDonald accompanied Officer McDonald, as you saw in the report this month, and Officer Hilliard had another Narcan saved, so I thought it appropriate that he go along. And of course, Mackenzie Johnson, who just does a phenomenal job with everything mental health, codependency-related for us, went along as well. So it was, we had, did the presentation, and enjoyed presenting, obviously a solemn occasion, but, and I already talked briefly about, I guess that was last month's report that the save was on. We did have National Night Out. Unfortunately, we had to end about 45 minutes early. The thunderstorms rolled in, made it almost all the way through. I think for the weather and the predicted weather, we had a really good attendance, so we were happy with that. And we hope to keep progressing forward and have a similar event next year, minus the weather. And as far as my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I don't have anything that I wanted to go over. There is a motion later on, under the Managers' tab, that I would like to talk about, so I can wait till then, or we can bring it up now. And I also thought there was going to be another motion on here tonight for the MOUs for the square cameras, Charles. Can we make sure we get that on next time? Yeah, I sent-- Let me get this here, hold on. Yeah, back in August, I sent out an email, and you just basically said, "Thanks, we'll get on the September business meeting agenda." Apparently, that slipped through. Or not.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for the chief? All right. We'll get to your motions, and we'll be able to discuss the MOU there. All right. That takes us to the officer of the manager.
Before I begin my report, Ms. English, I wanted to confirm in your motion, the first motion, and COA-220057, is that supposed to be 240057, major project, 226 North Stratton Street? COA-220057 is on the agenda, major project, 226 North Stratton Street, Wesley K. Heiser. It's supposed to be 240057?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's a typo.
So just make that note.
Yeah, thank you.
I have been out of the office for the last 10 days, so I was not able to prepare my normal written monthly report, but I have two announcements. Marie Ferreira Acasio is our new HR coordinator, who has started work, and she is in attendance tonight. Sorry, I butchered your name there in the middle. I will get that right. As we know, Kara Reeve Meyer is going to be leaving employment here at the Borough at the end of the year, so Ms. Acasio has joined us early to have a seamless transition in those duties as it relates to the Borough. Secondly, late last week, the Borough received word that, if you remember, we applied for SS4A grant funds, which is Safe Streets for All, for a street master plan for the Borough. The Borough was awarded 120,000 of the 150 requested, so the Borough's match on that will be 30,000. What this does is it creates the opportunity for us to create, rather, it gives us the opportunity to create a master plan, that once that plan is in place, we can go back to the SS4A program to seek construction dollars. Very important for infrastructure as it relates to stormwater and other needs for the Borough. the Borough. With that, I have no formal comments beyond that, unless you have some questions before we get into motions.
All right. Any questions for the manager? All right. Anybody care to make a motion to approve the bills and payrolls for the month as presented?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we have a COLA increase.
I'll make a motion to authorize a COLA increase for retired police pensioner Kevin Wilson to be paid from the police pension plan effective August 1, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Then we have the CDBG grants.
I'll make a motion authorizing the Borough of Gettysburg to enter into a cooperation agreement with the County of Adams for the fiscal year of 2022. Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program Administration. Rita C. Freeling, Gettysburg Borough Mayor, J. Matthew Moon, President of Borough Council, Charles R. Gable, MPA Borough Manager, and Sarah L. Stoll, Assistant Borough Manager Secretary, are hereby authorized to execute the cooperation agreement on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we have the railroad agreement.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution number 090924-1, authorizing and ratifying entry into a facility encroachment agreement with CXX Transportation, Inc., relative to the installation of subgrade pipelines for the conveyance of potable water, and authorizing and ratifying entry into a facility encroachment agreement with CXX Transportation for the installation of a subgrade pipeline for the conveyance of stormwater, and further authorizing Charles R. Gable, MPA Borough Manager, to execute and deliver the agreements on behalf of the Borough.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We have the MOU with the Park Service.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 090924-2, authorizing the intergovernmental cooperation by the Borough in its entry into mutual aid and assistance cooperation agreement with the National Park Service, United States Department of the Interior, for the purposes of providing mutual law enforcement services and emergency assistance, assistance by the officers of the Gettysburg Borough Police Department within the Gettysburg National Military Park and the Eisenhower National Historic Site, and by the National Park Service, law enforcement rangers, and Park Service police officers within the Borough of Gettysburg. J. Matthew Moon, President of Borough Council, Charles R. Gable, Borough Manager, Robert W. Glenny, Jr., Chief Police, and Sarah L. Stoll, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to sign, attest, execute, and deliver the mutual aid and cooperation general agreement on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We'll pause here for discussion. Chief, I believe you had some thoughts you wanted to share on this.
I do. Back when Charles sent me this, back in August, I reviewed the entire document a couple of days to look through it, and there's a couple, one minor change that I would have liked to have seen made, and one change that I feel was rather major, that I believe needs changed before I sign off on the agreement. I've discussed it with the mayor, and I believe she's in agreement with me. So the minor concern I have is that throughout the document, it refers to the Gettysburg Borough Police Department as GBPD. Traditionally, we are never referred to as GBT, GBPD, I can't even say it. It's GPD generally. So, I mean, that's just, it makes it more difficult for me to read. It's not, that's not, that's why I said that's a minor issue. But I would like to see that as GPD, but if that doesn't happen, that doesn't happen. My main concern lies on page four in Article III, Section B, subsection four. I believe the language should be changed from "the Borough," and "GBPD" may decide at any time to withdraw emergency law enforcement assistance, to "the Chief of Police," or his designee may decide at any time to withdraw emergency law enforcement assistance. That language is more similar to the language that was contained in the Park Services portion, where, which is Article III, Section A, subsection two G, which is paid on page three, which states the NPS Chief Ranger and/or, or his or her representative may decide at any time to withdraw emergency law enforcement assistance. This particular line, in my view, is talking about an operational decision at the time where it says, "No, we're out." It is my belief that that decision need be made by somebody in the police department chain of command who has the training and experience to make that decision. Otherwise, I mean, these, these situations are often chaotic and tense, uncertain and ever-changing, and to add a line in there that, you know, "Well, we don't know who can call us off," is, it just, it adds a bit of confusion. And I think that the, it should be fair to make this change, but technically require us to define somewhere who has the authority to withdraw assistance in emergency police action outside of the police chain of command. So I just believe it makes it simpler and cleaner if we just say "the Chief of Police" or his or her representative, or the Chief of Police, or, or his or her designee, rather than having the Borough, or Borough and GPD. And it makes for a cleaner document. I believe it to be a necessary change. That's, that's my pitch.
All right. So I'm going to ask Solicitor Eastman to explain why he drafted the MOU the way he did.
Well, actually, the comments of the chief were provided to me, and the agreement, the final agreement, has been amended.
Oh, okay.
The agreement has the Borough and GBPD, by and through the Borough's Chief of Police, or his/her designated GBPD representative, and on-scene commanding law enforcement officer may decide at any time to withdraw law enforcement assistance. So I, I believe I captured what you needed to.
I tried calling you today, and then on Friday.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's not you. It's, you know, I know we just missed each other, but I attempted to make sure, to see if this was corrected beforehand, and the one that was on the, in the, the stuff that council sees had that in it. So I'm, I'm fine with that language. It sounds much more appropriate. It takes out any confusion.
Your, your comments were considered, and appropriate amendment was made to the agreement. And I'm sorry that we did not connect today.
Long as it was amended, I am happy.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a question. I was wondering if there's any future possibility of there being a change to the MOU, if that would require us to vote on another resolution? Or it sounds to me like we're voting on a resolution authorizing you to enter into this agreement. So the language itself, I'm not sure if that is really something, you know, we're voting on right now.
It's the Borough entering the agreement, not the police department.
Right. Right. But I guess what I was asking is if the Borough would enter into a separate agreement, would we have to have another vote on that? Because the language was different.
The, the amended language has been attached to the resolution.
To the resolution. So what we're voting on is the amended part.
But just in case there were some, a, you know, some last-minute revisions, if you would, your authorization is one that you are approving in the agreement in substantial form of. So that's a good point, and that is covered in the resolution.
In the resolution. Okay.
So if council is in favor of proceeding with the resolution.
Sure. Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we have a resolution about the municipal leadership summit.
I'll make a motion to authorize Charles R. Gable, Borough Manager, to represent the Borough of Gettysburg as a voting delegate and resolutions committee appointee at the 2024 Municipal Leadership Summit to be held in October 2024.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Charles, can you tell us a little bit about what this entails for you?
So yeah, this is the Pennsylvania Municipal League Summit. They have an annual summit every year where the membership throughout the Commonwealth convenes. It's a professional development conference for both elected officials and professionals in the public administration field. PML also acts, without overstating it, as a lobbyist on behalf of Pennsylvania municipalities. The Resolutions Committee advances resolutions for representation in Harrisburg to seek favor with our state legislature to pass laws that benefit, are to the benefit of our local municipalities statewide.
A great example of this would be the vast number of municipal police departments in Pennsylvania that would favor a new law allowing municipal radar enforcement. And in previous years, the PML, this, this organization has suggested to the state legislature that that would be an important tool for local law enforcement, and the state legislature has thus far declined to grant that.
Only state that does that.
And I would also add that it's one of few issues that the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police, the FOP, probably any organization that represents municipal police officers, PML, and any municipal organization actually agree on. So it's, it's kind of universally agreed upon that we should have it, and it just doesn't get there.
Doesn't get out of our Senate. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. And then we have another motion about Mrs. Butterfield.
I'll make a motion to authorize Judith R. Butterfield, Vice President of Borough Council, to represent the Borough of Gettysburg as a voting delegate at the 2024 Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs Fall Leadership Conference to be held in October 2024.
Is there a second? All right. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Same concept, different organization.
Anything you'd like to add, Mrs. Butterfield?
Just that there's a lot of teaching opportunities at these leadership conferences. They offer seminars on leadership skills, and it offers a lot of written materials that I can bring back for the staff.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. This final motion is the one that was the amendment on tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 090924-3, authorizing the Board of Commissioners of Adams County to submit an application for 2024 Community Development Block Grant Funds to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to our liaison reports. I don't see Main Street with us here today. I believe we all received that report in our packets today, and the, and also through email. Thank you, Karen. So let's go to Mr. Carr with Gara.
I have nothing to report right now. Last time I talked to him, they are still searching for a new executive director.
Yep. All right. GMA, Mr. Berger?
Yes, we did meet in August. We voted to unanimously make the additional contribution to the GIL project for $100,000. Certainly, it expressed the goodwill working with three parties and, and the mutual benefit and the shared costs of the project, and it was well-appreciated. The interceptor job, the sewer, the bids have been received, and we're going to review them the next meeting.
Excellent.
That work's going to be starting very soon. The Andrews Well, we're finishing up our land development plan with Cumberland Township, and the work got started on Washington Street, so water lines are being put in.
Oh, we are grateful to our partners at GMA as well, so thank, please thank them for us. And Mrs. Butterfield, the bid.
Yes, our next recycling event, the covered device turn-in, will be October 19th. It will be set up the same way as always, with the cooperation of Robbie's Public Works folks. I've already had people call up to sign up. They look forward to this. Anyone who would like to, or who enjoys being thanked and praised, should volunteer to help us that day, because everyone participating thanks the Borough and praises us for setting up such events. I'm arranging with Tom Fagan of Waste Management to come again and meet with the staff and with the recycling committee. It's just a touch base. Is everything going on as usual as far as what materials are accepted for recycling? And that will be coming up shortly, I hope, within the next two weeks.
I'm sorry. I was asking about the bid.
The bid? Oh, wow. No, I jumped to recycling. I could also talk about Steinware, if you'd like me to do that. No. The bid, yes, they discussed the upcoming, our next year's old-fashioned baseball event. Every year, we learn something new about that event. Started out with the players in a parade several years ago. That did not float well. So then they did personal interviews in each place of business with the player, and that did okay, but not as well as they'd hoped. So they're studying, they being the members of bid, are studying ways to increase the participation and the public realization of these baseball fellows are interesting, have an interesting story to tell, and to participate. They're also working on how they will participate in the Christmas festival. Jill Sellers of Main Street does a wonderful job of leading them through that exercise. One troubling thing that came out of that meeting, Steinware Avenue is having a sewer gas problem, and I've talked with Robbie about it. He's well aware. He, his folks are, have met with them. I meet with GMA tomorrow, or speak with GMA tomorrow, to see how they might handle it. As Chad often points out, our underground systems in this very old town are old, and problems like this surface. So everybody's on the case, and hopefully, we'll have this Steinware sewer gas issues solved shortly. One last thing, this bid meeting was moved from our usual meeting place at Best Western because there was an event scheduled there, to the Lomas location on Mayor Alley. As I searched and searched for Mayor Alley throughout Gettysburg, it made clear to me that our alleys are not marked well. And those of us who have lived here for many years know where these alleys are by name, but not, not newcomers and not tourists. So I'm going to meet with the powers that be, as time allows, and discuss how we might improve our identification of alleys. And incidentally, the Mayor Alley, years ago, there was a movement to rename it, and that fell through because the mayor, for whom it is named, family is still in the area, and they did not want it renamed. So for now, it will remain Mayor Alley, even though some in town wish it were named something else.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought this up. One of my professional passions has been, for many decades, is working in very old historic theaters around the country, and some places that are 100, 120 years old. And inevitably, older buildings like that do tend to smell like sewage. But I learned a long time ago that often those old buildings will have sinks, or floor drains, or even toilets in the basement that go unused. And when the pee traps on those go dry, that allows the sewer gas to come in. So something folks can do, regular maintenance on their older properties, is even if you don't use a drain regularly, just pour some water down it maybe once a month or so. It can help with the sewer gas, which can be not only unpleasant, but dangerous. That takes us to Mayor Freeling. I believe you said ACBA does not meet till October. Is that correct?
September.
September.
They meet next Monday.
Next Monday. All right.
And the State Fire Commissioner, Tom Cook, will be there. And they have sent out invitations to fire, local fire chiefs, assistants and deputy chiefs. And of course, once again, anybody can attend, but it is suggested you make a reservation for this meeting because they expect it to be packed. It's at the Emergency Services Building on Green Meyer Lane.
Excellent. Thank you. Mrs. Butterfield, the cog.
Yes, this past cog meeting was interesting. Each of the commissioners gave a report on their, the organizations, institutions with whom they are the liaison representative. And it was interesting how broad our cooperation within the county is with other such institutions. The Collaboration Committee had to cancel because of illness within the membership, but they continued to review the collaboration report on what is needed by the different municipalities for training as far as security within their systems.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Lawson, anything for Happy?
Yeah, Happy has their monthly meeting tomorrow. But I also just want to let the public know that on Saturday, September twenty-first, Happy's annual trail ride will take place. Anyone interested in the bicycle ride, it's three different types of mileage, and it's accompanied by members of Happy. Actually, people will register for that. They can check the Happy website. They come from Virginia, Philadelphia. Last year, we had people from Connecticut that came. The trail ride begins and ends at the rec park, and it is Saturday, September twenty-first. That's it.
Thank you. ACTPO.
The next ACTPO meeting is October twenty-third.
Say, Mr. Berger?
Nope.
Okay. As luck would have it, we've already had our recycling report for the evening, I believe. You had the fire report in your packets. I did not see one for EMS. That takes us to elected officials' comments. Mayor Freeling.
Yes, I spoke last night at the Project Gettysburg Leon meeting, which is very nice. And they focus on food and art, and we talked about our sister city agreement. And I also gave them an update on our sister city in Japan's visit because they were very interested in that. Let's see, I get my papers together here. The other thing I wanted to announce was, it was just official last Thursday. I was appointed by Governor Shapiro as a member of his Pennsylvania Workforce Development Board. So they're sending me my homework. I had my initial orientation meeting on Friday, and they're sending me my homework to learn. And we'll be having quarterly meetings. And also, I will be attending the Pennsylvania Municipal League meeting that Charles is going to in October, because I'm a board member of the Municipal League. So that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Peter? Alicia? Chris? Patty?
Thank you.
Yep, Chad?
No, thanks.
Judy?
I'll just build briefly on what Charles said. Our HR director will be leaving. Kara, such a valued employee and sunny, smiling face on the second floor. You will be missed, and thank you for your hard work here with our employee handbook, which was a major part of your experience here. We appreciate it, and we thank you.
Yeah, here, here. I just want to take a moment and say, Chief, I do appreciate you and your officers speaking at the overdose walk on the twenty-sixth. I was speaking with one of the organizers the other day, who said, you know, we've been doing this now for so long, and it's supposed to be a celebration of life, as well as a memorial, and it just seems to get harder each year. It is meaningful to have your officers there, to have people there who have saved other people's lives and given them a second chance. So thank you for going to that, thank you for attending that. This is recovery month, so just want to remind everybody out there, there's always a second chance. If anybody would like to acquire Narcan for their home or business, you can contact me, and I'm happy to get you that and get you trained on the use of it. It's very quick, it's very easy, and it has a high potential to save lives. We would really love to see it in every first aid kit in the county, so if you need it, please reach out. And I also want to point out that October twenty-sixth, across the street in the parking lot, we will have our next medicine take-back in cooperation with the police department as well. This is a really important initiative to get all of your prescription drugs that are going to go unused, perhaps they're expired, perhaps you just don't need them anymore. They will be properly disposed of by the DEA, they'll be incinerated. It keeps them out of the hands of people we don't want getting access to them, as well as keeping it from infecting our environment, our groundwater, and our local wildlife. So please, everybody, take advantage of this medicine take-back. It's a free event in cooperation with our police department, with the DEA, and it's a really important initiative. Sir?
Could you just add that there, we have drop boxes for prescription medication throughout the county, and one here as well. So if you can't make that date, bring them here, we'll get them disposed for that.
Yep. Yeah, we routinely collect hundreds of pounds, just here in Gettysburg alone. The county is collecting thousands of pounds of unused medication and disposing of it safely. But, yeah, the chief is absolutely correct. We have a drop box here at the Borough Office. You can bring dangerous medications here any day of the week and have them safely disposed of. And if you need to dispose of your sharps, you can do that at the drop box in Bonneville at the fire department. All right, that takes us to our second public comment section of the evening. This section is not restricted to items on the agenda. You can speak on any topic. We ask you that you limit yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium, please give us your name and address of residence. Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn to executive session.